Good evening and welcome to the February 5th Zoning Board of Adjustments meeting. The Gostown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five members and four alternates. If anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please see Brian Rose for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and intends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Brian Rose at the Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the Zoning Board of Adjustment tonight, you have the right to appeal to Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within thirty days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appear to Superior Court. My name is Kathy Hooton. I am the chairman of the zoning, acting chairman of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and at this time, I would like the board and staff to introduce themselves.
Leonard Stewart, alternate.
Joe Feminow, alternate.
Ed Lupi, vice chair.
Gail LaBrack.
Joanne Duffy.
Patty Gale's staff.
The first, on the first business of our agenda is the approval of the minutes from January 8th meeting.
I'd rather make a motion to approve as we stand.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Do you want to appoint one of them as voting?
To vote, um, Joelle, appoint you to vote on the minutes.
You were here last meeting.
Yeah, I was at the last meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions being done, the vote carries 5-0-0. The first item on the agenda is a rehearing request, and at this point, I will ask Joe to be the fifth voting member of the zoning board, as he has been present throughout this since last November. This is a rehearing request that was approved on January 8th, 2013, for the following application that was approved with conditions on December 4th, 2012. The application is for Linda Forsythe. Owner, applicant, is seeking variances to allow an existing portable tent shed and a newly-built deck slash platform to remain, and a proposed porch extension to be built within the hundred-foot setback requirement of the Wetland Surface Water Conservation District, and within the side and rear yard setbacks. The variances are required because the existing and proposed improvements are located up to twenty-two feet from the Piscataquag River, where a section 13334 of the zoning ordinances requires a hundred-foot setback from all surface waters within the town, and where a section 4.3 of the zoning ordinances requires a thirty-foot rear yard setback, and also because the proposed porch extension and portable tent shed are within the fifteen-foot side yard setback. The property is located at 131 Danus Park Road, MAP 25, Lot 32, in the Residential Two District. Okay, so, the hearing request is requested by, who do I hear first, the Hobbs? Huh? At this time, I would like to ask the Hobbses, or, at this time?
I don't think so. It's a whole new hearing, so you start. Why don't you start with the applicant?
Okay, we start with the applicant. Okay. Linda, would you like to come forward?
That's what we did, right?
No, they requested a rehearing.
That's what I was...
So, I would say...
I thought it was like a whole new here, it's like, it's a new hearing.
Wouldn't they start?
I would think they would start, because they requested a rehearing.
Because they're arguing their points.
They're arguing what the pool was...
Linda, just a minute, because I really, we really do believe it is the Hobbses, that because you are the applicant, that should come forward first.
Actually, Ms. LaBrack is correct.
Okay.
It is a rehearing that you read it, so it's a whole new applicant.
Hearing, like hearing de novo.
Right, exactly.
So, starting off very good.
Yeah, it's urgent to come forward and reapply.
Well, thank you very much for your direction.
Don't thank me.
Okay, Linda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, where to start? All right, everybody got copies of this?
Yes, we did.
Okay, um, the letter for the rehearing from the attorney for Mr. and Mrs. Hobbs, I just figured the easiest way to do it was to break it down and address each issue as it came. The first one was, um, the zoning ordinance 15.3.1.1, said, they said it wasn't addressed. And the variance states, "The variance will not result in an increase in flood heights, additional threats to public safety, or extraordinary expense." There will be no, a deck or a portable tent shed would not be an increase in flood heights. The portable tent shed, if there was a risk of floods, it would be emptied, everything moved, the tent taken down, and moved to higher ground. The decks, as we're doing it now, would be permanently attached to the house, so there'd be no, no issue with them going, getting lost in the water. So, there'd be no public expense involved.
Excuse me, Linda. The first, number one of the ordinance, 15311, "The variance will not result in an increase in flood heights, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary expense." What was your statement in regards to that statement?
There will be no increase in flood heights by building a deck on each side of the existing porch, or by having a portable tent shed. No increased risks to public safety, as both decks would be attached to the building as permanent fixtures. The portable tent shed would be emptied, equipment moved to higher ground away from the flood area, disassembled at the, at warning of an impending flood. We are notified as to how fast and how much the water's flowing, and gives us adequate time to be able to do that. So, there would be no additional public expense involved, and the variance has all been approved already. The second part of the ordinance was 15.3.1.2. "The variance will result in increased flood levels in regulatory floodway during the base flood discharge." Again, there's no way that the decks or the tent are gonna, is gonna be an increase in flood levels, whether, during a base flood discharge or not. Third variance was 15.3.1.1.3. "The variance is the maximum, minimum necessary, considering the flood hazard, to afford relief. Both decks will be secured to the main building, so they would ensure they would not become flood debris. The tent will be emptied, equipment moved to higher ground away from the flood area, and the tent disassembled at warning of impending flood." Again, we are notified with enough time to do that. The second variance they said we did not address was 4.3, which addresses the distance for residential front, side, and rear setback requirements for the medium and high-density residential, front setbacks are 25 feet, side setbacks are 15 feet, the rear is 30 feet. All existing buildings on my property are within, they're within these setbacks, and it's, I guess they're grandfathered in. There's, um, I don't have 30 feet between my house and the, and the river. My, the permanent shed that's been there has never been moved, it was there when I moved in, it's not going anywhere, it's still within 15, like, maybe 10 feet from the property line. The portable tent shed is on my side of the fence, my side of my fence, and it gets about three feet sticks above it, which is just a point, which would be their view. Rear setback for both decks, they were 22 feet from the water's edge, they will not extend any further behind, beyond the existing porch. The third ordinance that was, uh, that needed to be addressed was 15.3.1.2. "Burden of persuasion. The applicant bears the burden of presenting evidence that is sufficient to enable the ZBA to reach a conclusion, make findings significant to support or grant of a variance. No variance shall be granted unless the applicant presents such evidence." I purchased the property as distressed property, it was in need of a lot of improvements and a lot of TLC. And it just seems odd to me that there's only one person, one neighbor who has a problem with us doing any kind of improvements to the place. So, being able to make the improvements, I thought I was gonna be allowed to make, would increase the value of my property, make it nicer for everybody else to see. And I do have a picture of what it looked like before we bought it, this was my preview of the property, where you can see it's full of debris in the yard, and then the picture The fourth issue was, "We failed to meet the burden of the variances would be, not be contrary to the public interest." That turned out to be ordinance 13.3.4. "Relief from outer 50 feet of wetland or surface water buffer may be granted by the board after submission of a report from a certified wetlands scientist retained by the applicant and the board, to the planning board. After allowing the Conservation Commission a minimum forty-five days to review, make comment on the planning board, shall make a finding that the, that the functions, values, and conditions of the wetland resources will not be compromised." The wetland setbacks for the lots created prior, for lots created prior to March 9th of 93, there are no setback requirements. Is how, is exactly how I read it out of the ordinance. "The sole purpose for the portable tent shed is to keep yard equipment and recreational equipment from being an eyesore to, in the yard, and to keep the property looking neat and clean. It stays within the character of the, of the neighborhood. The alternative would be equipment covered in tarps, which is be unsightly. There poses no, no threat to public health, safety, or welfare." The portable tent shed is on my side of the fence, of my fence, and has been in the same location, the tent, the fence has been in the same location prior to my purchase of the property. I have supplied an elevation certificate to the board, and that was, was completed in August of 2012. Both decks are secured to the main building, so they won't become flood debris, tent will be emptied, and equipment moved to the higher ground, and the tent disassembled. The portable tent shed was placed in its current location to avoid any interference of well and septic, and also to be less conspicuous to anybody driving down the street, or from the river. The decks will not exceed the existing rear porch footprint, and it's in the rear setbacks and the side setbacks. The decks will be attached to the house, which would be prevented from becoming debris. There's also an approved shoreline permit by notification, which there is a copy that I've submitted each time, and it was approved on November 1st, file number 2012-02931. And I've attached the elevation certificate, the picture of what the portable tent shed looks like from my, from the end of my driveway, and then there are other pictures of houses within, seven houses of mine, with what would be the alternative, tarps covering everything. A couple of them got in, got in there twice. And then number five, um, failed, they're saying we failed to meet the burden of hardship. Hardship is not being able to improve my property is the biggest hardship. The portable tent shed is there to be able to keep things contained undercover and keep the yard and the house looking neat and clean. In contrast, though, I have to look at their, the uncapped garage wall of their garage that's facing mine, it's got two different colors of paint, and it looks like asbestos shingles that are on it as well. "My decks do not encroach on anyone else's property. Again, I purchased the property in need of repair and improvements, this is all I seek to do. I did not think that a neighbor would have preferred to live next door to a property that was so neglected. Nothing that I have done, or am requesting, is unreasonable for the use of the property. I have been very careful not to overcrowd the property, trying to keep it within the nice cozy feel of the rest of the neighborhood. Mr. Bison has been, has had some misinformation in regards to the Hobbs owning property at the time of the floods. They owned 121 Danus Park and was used as rental property, they did not live down there at the time of the floods. They purchased 123 Danus Park as flood damaged and distressed." The picture in question that they keep saying is a cement concrete retaining wall floating down river, is a railroad tie retaining wall. Never did I say it was concrete, it was just a railroad tie retaining wall that went floating down the river with the flood. They insist that there's no shoreline has been lost because of the floods. Well, Mother Nature just has her way of taking out land when she goes. There's been four to eight feet actually lost of shoreline, and the recent certified survey shows that. There's also pictures to back up with the retaining wall. And number six was, "We failed to satisfy the substantial justice of the element." And it goes back to the previous ordinance 4.3, and then 13.34, that we've already talked And it just, it seems odd to me that from one paragraph to another, my portable tent shed goes from something that is, can be considered permanent to something that's really flimsy. So, descriptions, I take issue with a little bit. I've never said the concrete floats, that was Mrs. Hobbs who said that. Seven, the, "To the extent that the board relied upon my representation that the state had granted a shoreline permit, in reliance was misplaced." No, there was a shoreline permit approved and submitted. It also says the ZBA failed to specify the relief granted. We did, we're very specific with the conditions on which the variances were, were approved. So, that I'm not quite sure. But all the setback encroachments were addressed, and the decks would be not to exceed the footprint of the succeeding porch. And attached to that is the shoreline permit.
Are there any questions by the board members?
I guess the only question I have, I would just want to make sure that we've covered all the issues, or all the criteria in the variances, plus the added criteria that weren't addressed the first time, so that it doesn't end up having the same problem all over again. So, if you're comfortable that you've addressed all the criteria?
I believe I have, I went through every, everything that was picked out in the letter.
Okay, everything that was picked out in his letter, but is it also everything that's in the zoning ordinance? There's the list of, of requirements for a variance? Are they, are they in sync with each other?
I believe they are.
Okay.
I'm just thinking that we may want to say that the first application that we reviewed be part, be made part of this record, if that's agreeable to the applicant, because there may be something in there that she didn't cover tonight.
Which that could be. I too have that copied with me, too.
I agree with that, that, that we should make that determination, that all of it be part of an inclusive record for everything.
Because I was actually assuming that's what it was gonna be, it was gonna be in addition to what we've already done.
No, we don't need...
Just by mentioning it?
Yeah, okay. Okay, and we have no questions from the board at this time? Okay, thank you, Linda. And now, the Hobbses, and...
Ready for it?
Yes.
Good evening, folks. My name is John Bisson. I represent Frank and Janice Hobbs. Thank you for entertaining us on this motion for rehearing. They are direct abutters, as you know, at the adjacent parcel to the one you've just heard about. Just one thing where, where you left off that I wanted to clarify, this issue of the Shoreline Protection Act permit. It has not been granted, it was received on November 1st, 2012. We contacted the Department of Environmental Services today, and it has not been approved. So, it is pending, it remains pending, it's still up there. So, I just wanted to clarify that issue. There have been some comments that were reported in the minutes of the prior meeting, and some suggestions tonight, that perhaps the Hobbs are chronic complainers, and that somehow their status is, should be looked at in a different light, because they've been before this board before. Candidly, that's completely inappropriate. The issue here is whether or not an owner of property in Gostown, on the river, in a very sensitive area of this community, does what she is required to do to obtain the relief that she wants. And the relief that she wants, as you know, is fairly extraordinary. It's a variance, it's a variance from an ordinance that's been approved by your community. By its very definition, they shouldn't be granted like candy, and here she's asking for more than one. The Hobbs were living down on the river during the two once-in-a-lifetime floods that have happened recently. They lived through it, I'm not sure where the comment comes from, that Mrs. Hobbs was not living there during the flood, she was there. I think the, a member of this board that was here at the last hearing actually went down to Mrs. Hobbs' property at the time of the flood to see the devastation in the community. So, I'm not sure where that comment came from. Mrs. Forsythe purchased her property in 2009, and in the three years since, has expanded the use of the property. The plan that you folks have as part of the record, if you, if you have the ability to look at it, the driveway that's shown on the plan is not how it was oriented when the property was purchased, it was more of a straight shot into the property, so significant additional pavement has been added, and with that additional pavement being added, the shed that's on the Hobbs side of the property, the wooden shed, it's labeled shed, was moved closer to the Hobbs property, as well as the propane tank that's shown on that plan. Those two items were more in the middle of the property, and have been pushed or crowded over to the Hobbs side of the property. The portable shed that's there is a significant, whatever you want to call it, whether you call it a structure, a quonset hut, a tent, I don't, I'm not sure what you want to call it, it's labeled on this plan as a portable shed, it's a pretty significant structure. The, the significance of that is that Mrs. Forsythe is now here, having added to her property, she's put on the deck, she's installed the portable shed, or put it up, or it's there, and is looking for permission after the fact, which suggests that her intention is to continue to crowd the property for her, her personal needs. What I think we heard her say is, "All of these structures are within the setback, so I should be allowed to put more things within the setback." That's inconsistent with general zoning law, which says... That's inconsistent with general zoning law, which says that properties should be as consistent with the ordinance as they can be. And we should look to reduce nonconformities, not support or encourage additional nonconformities. So to say that simply because my house is within the setback, I should get to ignore the setback and put as many structures as I want within the setback is illogical and is not supported by your ordinance. While we're looking at the plan, there are some serious problems with the plan. There are no dimensions. We don't know how much of a distance between the portable shed that's shown on the plan and the property line is actually there. There's no distance. There's no dimensions to any of the structures. We see none of the setbacks. We see none of the criteria for an acceptable plan for zoning purposes. So by its very definition, if this shed is portable and you approve this request to allow a portable shed within the setback and she does what she said, which is take it down, move the stuff to high ground at the next flood, and then bring it back, where's she going to put it? Because there's no dimensions on this plan. So if you are inclined to grant this relief, which we encourage you not to do, this plan is inadequate to grant any relief. Because when you say she's allowed to put that portable shed within the setback, this plan doesn't tell you where it is. There's no dimension, there's no distance. So the plan by itself doesn't support the relief she's requesting because there's no specificity. So if you simply approve it, I'm not sure what you're approving. The other issue is there are some serious inconsistencies on this plan with reality. And in order to show you that, I have a series of pictures. I don't know if I have enough. I guess I think I do.
We can share.
I have, I think I have five. Shift those around. Wait for you to have those. The Hobbs family recently took these pictures. So these are current pictures. The first picture that you're seeing.
Do you have a rough date as when they were taken?
I think they were taken yesterday.
Okay. Good work.
Fourth.
Okay.
I think there's a four and 3:30 PM.
Oh, okay.
Or something, 3:40. So they're date stamped. So the first one is a picture of the fence that's shown on the plan along the Hobbs boundary line. And it shows our portable structure, a rather imposing structure. You can see the top of it. The second picture is rather revealing. This picture is from the river, looking along the common boundary towards Danus Park. And it shows the portable shed right up against the Hobbs fence. So if you look at the plan, there is supposed to be, I think what was represented at the last meeting, six feet between the shed and the fence. There's not six feet there. There's barely six inches there. So there's a serious problem with where that portable shed is, such that if this plan is accurate and the fence is entirely on the Hobbs property at that portion of the property, then that portable shed is on the Hobbs property. There's no way around it. So there's a problem there. The next picture shows just the additional crowding that I was talking about. You see the propane tank right in front of the Hobbs garage area and that wooden shed, that wooden structure that was moved closer when they repaved the area and the large tent structure that we're talking about. And there's another picture of that.
What's this asphalt in the front, if I might ask?
That's the driveway. It says.
Who's driveway is that?
That's Mrs. Forsythe.
Okay.
Ms. Forsythe.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Forsythe's. So it's taken from Danus Park, looking back towards the wooden shed with the portable shed in the back and the river behind it. Then there's another picture that shows some sort of all-terrain vehicle or some vehicle behind the shed close to the river. And then finally, you see from the road, from Danus Park, looking back, that's the house, that's Ms. Forsythe's house, that's the pole, the utility pole shown on the plan. And again, there's supposed to be some depth between the house and the fence. And in my opinion, it's not there. Maybe it's there. I don't know.
It isn't there.
So there are problems with this plan that was pitched to you folks as where she wants to put the portable shed because it's abutting the fence. And so there are serious issues with the dimensional requirements and conditions that are, that you're being asked to approve. So the plan has some concern. Now, with respect to the actual zoning relief that she was here for, and I'm glad that Ms. Labrec asked the question to make sure that she believes she covered all the criteria, she didn't the first time and she hasn't again. With respect to the side yard setback, which is in your section 4.3, she originally failed to address that request in its entirety. And today, in her submission, the, she only says what we've already discussed, which is because I don't have enough room, I ought to be able to put more structures within the setback. That does not address the five criteria. It doesn't address hardship. She doesn't explain why she has to put that quonset hut tent thing within setback. She could put it in the front of her lot. She could put it where the pavement is. She could put it, my understanding is her brother who lives with her owns the property across the street. She could put it across the street. There is no hardship supporting putting it up against that fence on the side lot. If you look at the plan, there's plenty of room to orient that same portable shed where it says existing paved driveway in the front of the home.
I do have a, I have a question on the tent. So in the application, is it just that the tent can stay on the property or that it can stay in the exact location where it is?
In the, in the location where it is.
In the location.
It's, my interpretation is that they're looking to make it a permanent structure versus a temporary structure. And therefore, by allowing it to be a permanent structure.
I always take it, I always took it as a temporary structure.
Correct.
Temporary, that's all we ever wanted.
So my point is, I don't know if we need a, an actual positioning of the portable shed if we're to grant the ability to just have the tent on the property.
That's part of discussion, so.
You do need to because this temporary structure, to my understanding, has been there for three years.
But it's still temporary.
It's not temporary. It's been there for three years. She is asking for a variance to put it within 100 feet of the river and within the setback. It's a structure for purposes of your ordinance. It's a structure. And she wants to put it there and she wants it to be permanent, but she wants it to also be temporary so that she can say she'll pick it up and move it if she hears that it's going to rain.
Well, she has that ability, right? Because it's not fixed. So while there's been the need to move it, it still has the ability to be moved.
She is not asking for this, if you look at her application, what, this conversation that you're having, that's not what she's asking for. Her application is to put that structure where it's shown on this plan. That's the only question before you. You are not being asked to decide whether she can pitch a tent wherever she wants, whether she can move it from left to right, front to back, towards the center. She has submitted this application to say, that's where I want to put it. That's the only question.
Do you have that portion of the application with you?
You have the application. It's part of your record.
I have it here.
She submitted the application with the plan.
One comment I want to make about, no, excuse me, Linda, you cannot speak right now. The one, one thing I just wanted to speak into what you presented so far is that if I go with the graphic scale onto the diagram that you're looking at, it does, it appears to me that if you look at the boundary with the existing houses to the, to the property line on the side, it is within, it is within five feet. It doesn't, it certainly.
Well, that's the, that's the side where I.
Feet and that's what you're bringing to our attention.
That's the side where I said it was questionable, on that side.
And I think on the other side, it's within the five feet too.
On the other side, I beg to differ. That.
Based upon a graphic scale.
The plan shows the fence on the opposite side of the property line. The picture shows the shed right up against the fence.
The photo shows the tent.
Oh, this is the fence here?
Yeah. The fence is the thing with the little circles in it.
Okay. And that, oh, there you go. Okay.
So there's no way that that plan or sketch or chart, whatever.
There's five or six feet there.
There's no way that that's right.
Thank you.
So that's the point there. With respect to the criteria, which is really the issue, it's not your job to rewrite her application. She presented you with an application. And she's looking to put this structure, this thing, whatever we want to call it, where it's proposed. And she has the burden to carry on all of those conditions. And with respect to the side yard setback, she didn't touch any of them. On the other issues that we've talked about before, with respect to the flood hazard overlay, the 5-1-3 criteria.
Yeah, yeah.
Her, her suggestion that, her proposed response to the conditions is almost an admission that you shouldn't grant the relief. The point of that overlay is to protect the water resource. It's to keep stuff away from the river so that if there's a flood, it's not going down the river. So that if you have chemicals or, I don't know what's in there. I understood from the last meeting that, that they store motorcycles and things perhaps with oil and, you know, chemicals in that shed. I don't know what's in the shed. But the point is to pull stuff away from the river so that when there's a flood, it doesn't end up in the river. Her answer is, if I hear about a flood, I'll move it. Well, that's just unworkable. A flood, you don't have enough time to prepare and that's, that's why you have the requirement to keep stuff 100 feet from the river. So her suggestion on all of those criteria is simply, if I hear there's going to be a flood, I'll move the tent. That, to me, suggests that it shouldn't be there in the first place. And your own ordinance has a, has a preference for that first 50 feet. You can get a special permit, as you folks know, to put things in the second 50 feet. So 51 to 100, there's a relaxed criteria where you can put things. That first 50 feet, which is what we're talking about here, is the more highly regulated area. So again, if she wanted to move this thing so that it's on the other side of the 50-foot line, she could do it. She could put it in the front of her yard. She doesn't want it there because it's unattractive or whatever, but it solves the problem. It gets it away from the river. It gets it away from the Hobbs boundary. Might not be the most convenient choice, but it's an acceptable choice because it would be consistent with that part of your ordinance. But that's not what she's asking to do. So her suggestion that I'll simply move it, to me, again, is an admission that it shouldn't be there in the first place because that's what your ordinance is designed to protect. Now, the other criteria that you're all familiar with for any variance, the one that's most difficult to establish is always hardship. Is there a hardship? The hardship criteria is that there must be a special condition with this property distinguishing it from others in the neighborhood that creates the hardship. Well, what's she trying to do? She's trying to create more storage space. That's not a hardship because of this property. She bought a small property. There are small properties up and down the river, as you know. If she wanted to store more stuff, she should have bought a bigger property. A variance is not designed to give people more closet space. She has too much stuff. She's overburdening this unit. That's not a hardship. It's not a hardship that's legally recognizable. If she wants this tent, she can move it someplace else and store her stuff offsite. It doesn't have to be there. The geography of this lot does not justify that request. The other criteria for a variance, the public interest, the significant justice, those are, those are supported by the fact that you have an ordinance that is designed to protect that river resource that if this is allowed, is simply being ignored. There are a number of zoning conditions that apply to this property significantly to protect that river resource that will be gone. So what's the point of the ordinance? What's the point of those conditions if you allow this application to go forward? So for the reasons that we said, and there's a lot of them, the plan is wrong, the request is wrong, there has been no support for any of the required criteria, this application should be denied. And I'll entertain any questions if you have them, otherwise I'm done.
I have a question. In regards to, I mean, you mentioned a lot about the 100-foot setback requirement. Looks to me like most of these properties are all within, to me, 100-foot setback. And you talked about having too much stuff. Who's to decide how much is too much stuff?
Well, that's the point of the hardship criteria. It's not up to you to decide. It's up to the applicant to explain to you that because of the geography of this particular lot, she needs to be able to put that tent to store stuff within the 100-foot setback. It's, it's not up to me to decide whether she has too much stuff. She bought a property that is subject to your zoning ordinance that has this condition. And she has to explain to you that she suffers a hardship for the property, not because she wants to go out and buy another motorcycle and needs a place to store it. That is not a properly, a property-related hardship criteria.
I don't think she ever said that specifically because she has too much stuff. She didn't make a point that some neighboring properties and they have, you know, boats or, you know, tarps covering items that are in the, within the setbacks because the property is within the setback. So what's the difference between covering your stuff with a tent that's held up or a tarp? You still have stuff in the yard.
This is not, this is not a tarp.
Other properties had tarps. I understand this is not a tarp. But I'm just saying.
Well, that's like, that's like putting a tarp over your car. My car is not a structure. I can park my car wherever I want. A boat is not subject, storing a boat on your property is not something that comes before the zoning board of adjustment. She's the one who came before you, before the zoning board, asking for you to give her relief to put it there. If what you're saying.
What I'm saying is, people are going to have things in their yard.
Sure.
Whether they cover them with a tarp or they put them in a portable tent, there's still things in the yard. And I think that's the concern of the ordinance.
If your conclusion.
So if we're going to grant exceptions to allow people who are grandfathered within the setbacks, we're going to allow people to put their items on their property? That's, I don't think that's an issue because we're allowed, people shouldn't be allowed to have their items on their property. I think, I think the question is what she covers it with.
I agree that people should have things on their property. I agree with that. But this structure, this thing, if what you're saying is correct, that this is like a car or a boat, she shouldn't be here and you need to deny that request. Because you can't grant a variance for someone to park a boat on their property. That's not within your jurisdiction. You don't have authority to do that. So if what you're saying is this is like a boat with a tarp, then you need to deny her request and she can, she can leave it up there.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying she has something on her property and she's covering it.
It's a structure.
I, and I hear what Joe is saying. Joe, what Joe is trying to get to and, and it's a question that I also have that Joe's asking, is that if Ms. Forsythe has a multitude of vehicles or equipment that she has purchased, then what she's trying to do is she's trying to store it in something that is not offensive, I believe, to the eyesight. Is it my understanding as the attorney for the Hobbses that they would, they would prefer to see the equipment with tarps over it in her yard?
That's not the request that's before you. That's not what she's asking. And we're here, we're here objecting to her request. We're not here trying to tell her how to maintain her property.
Correct. But you, you did mention that she could have all these, all this equipment scattered throughout her yard.
That becomes a code enforcing issue for you folks. I don't know what, I don't know what rules apply. I don't know what, I don't know what rules apply in Goffstown about whether people can maintain pickup trucks and, you know, boats and multiple vehicles on their property. That is not an issue for the zoning board. You folks deal with requests related to real estate. And if you get into the business of saying, "Well, this kind of personal property can be on your property," that's beyond your jurisdiction, and everybody will be here. You'll have a line around the block-
Yeah.
-with people saying, "I want my property to look like a car lot because I have six cars."
You are the attorney that mentioned that. You are the one that threw it into the arena.
No, you misunderstood what I said. My point is, this is here before you as the zoning board because it's a structure. Otherwise, the application should not be here. And if we get to his point, then the only choice you have is to deny the request. Because you could say, "This is not a structure, not our issue." But you can't say that and then grant the request. For you to grant the request, the variance, you have to necessarily conclude that this is a structure. Not something temporary, not a tarp over a boat, not a car. It's a structure. Otherwise, she shouldn't be here. You don't have authority to deal with that. Because if you do that, as I said, you're going to have a line around the block of people saying, "Well, I have six cars that I want to park in my front yard, and I understand the zoning board is in the business of telling me that's okay." That's not your job, with due respect. So, any other questions?
I do have a question. Are we also here to talk about the deck?
Yeah.
Yes. Did you address the deck?
The deck issue is the same. She hasn't supported the criteria. I'm principally concerned about this hot thing. But again, it's her burden with respect to the deck to establish the hardship. What's the hardship? Why does she need an additional entertaining space, which is what a deck is? She hasn't addressed that at all. I didn't hear it, and it's her burden. So I don't comment on the fact that she hasn't addressed something. If she hasn't presented evidence on it, as I understand it, it's your duty to deny the application. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Linda, do you have, are there any upholders who would like to speak? No? Linda, do you have anything that you would like to say in rebuttal to what the Hobbses have presented?
I'm not a boss. I'm silly. This is getting insane. Part of my question is, it's been there for three, three and a half years. Now, because I went for the variance for the deck, then it became an issue, and then we had to go for the variance for the tent. I don't understand why now, after three and a half years, it's an issue.
But it is.
I know. But if it hasn't been an issue for three and a half years, I, nothing's been moved. They're saying we moved the propane tank. It's on a concrete slab. It's been in the same position since before I bought the property. The same with the wooden shed. We moved nothing. Only thing I did was put a tent up to store lawn equipment because we have not had the opportunity yet to raise the house, to give us a garage, which is our, which is my intent at some point. And it is temporary. Once I get a garage, get the house raised, and there's a garage, the tent goes away. Exactly when that's going to happen, I don't know because it's a lot of money to do it.
You're saying, quick question, you're saying that the propane tank and slab has not been moved since you bought the house?
Never. It's in the exact same position before I bought the house. And it's been there since the floods. Because the previous tank that was there went rolling down the river. And that was the answer from the propane company. They put that in and approved by the town.
Is that, is that the heating source for the house?
Just if I could add, to my knowledge, there are, there is no setback requirement for a propane tank. I know I have one right in my front yard, like, right next to the street. I'm not aware of any setback for propane tanks. They're not considered a structural.
And as far as moving the tent to my front yard, then it'd be sitting on top of my septic system. So no, this was the only logical place to put it.
Is the driveway area that's in front of the house over the septic system?
Nope.
Why couldn't the tent be moved there?
To my driveway?
Yeah.
It could, but it'd be hideous. I mean, who- I mean, the whole idea is to keep the place looking aesthetically nice.
Well, this plan that was done by Mike Dahlberg shows that the property line is actually different from the way the fence goes. So if you look at those photos, it looks like the portable shed is somewhat on the Hobbs' property. If it is in fact that close to the shed, to the fence, why couldn't the portable shed just be moved to be in accordance with this plan? And I realize there aren't any measurements on it, but, I mean, I wouldn't think that that's too difficult to get. It says right here, he did a field survey. And he did it twice, in 2008 and 2012.
And we have no, I have no problem having the fence moved back to the, beyond the property line. It is my fence.
But not even the fence. I'm just talking about moving the portable shed to where it's shown here, which would be, you know, looking at this, I don't know, would probably be five feet or something away from the fence so that it's shown where she's portraying it to be, rather than up against the fence. But the other issue I'd like to point out is that the Hobbs continuously talk about this portable shed. To me, it seems like they haven't mentioned much of the other items. Everything seems to be focused on this portable shed. It's like they obviously think it's ugly and they don't like it. But their shed, if this survey is correct, which I know Mike Dahlberg, and he does good work, so I'm assuming it is, is sitting on her property.
And that well is unmaintained.
And-
I'm sorry, can't let that stand. That's not accurate. That boundary line is not accurate. It's not accurate for her, and it's not accurate for the Hobbs. So you can't rely on that, and you shouldn't rely on that.
But I'm relying on a stamped survey by a surveyor. So that's, to me, that's something to rely on. They put their stamp on that. And the other thing that was mentioned is that the driveway supposedly has been moved, and it's new, and it's this and it's that. I looked on the property card. There's no mention of anything about the driveway. There's been no proof entered to show what that driveway looked like prior to Ms. Forsyth owning this. So again, I don't know that. I don't know what this looked like before. I just think that we're going around in circles with this once again.
At the present time, based upon the surveyed plan, the portable shed, based upon this plan, how far away is it from your well? Can we tell that?
I don't see.
Distance is, well, you can-
Yeah, well, you can with a graphic scale.
You can tell to an extent by the scale on the map. And I'm looking at it, and-
Actually-
I mean, there are no measurements.
All right, if you look at-
One of the things that I'm taking into consideration is what's on the drawing as far as the back wall of the portable shed and the fence. Now, it's clear to me, based on the photograph, that-
It's close to the fence.
One, if one inch is 10 feet, there looks to be almost two-eighths of an inch on this drawing between the fence and the back of the shed, which should, standby, which should represent probably two and a half to two and three-quarter feet. That's not there.
You can't go by one inch equals 10 feet because this is a reduced-sized copy, so those measurements don't come into play. But if you, if you look at that little picture and use that as being one inch, then you can use that as the scale. But you can't take a full inch because that's incorrect to do it that way. Because this is reduced.
In the third picture that I have, where it shows, I was taking a picture up the driveway of the tent and how it appears.
You can use this scale right here.
You can use this, but that's not a true inch.
That's what he's saying.
That's what I'm looking at.
I realize that. But using that scale-
Right, yeah.
I can tell that there's not, you know, based on the photograph and what's here. What's here, there's, there's- This drawing does not represent what the photo shows. One.
She has a big one.
Okay, now, I realize the attorney- we can't go by the property line that's on here. Unfortunately, this is the only surveyed map that we got in front of. If that's a full-size, okay, that's full-size. Now, it's a certified map. It's a certified plan. Unfortunately, you know-
It's actually, it's not, it's not the plan. It's not a plan.
I realize that, but unfortunately for counsel, it's all we have to go by. We've got to go by what we're being told is a certified lot line. Unless he has another certified map that shows the lot line someplace else, this is what we got to go with. So it's apparent to us that their shed is on her property. Her shed isn't where the plan says it's supposed to be. It's right up against the fence, which, according to this plan, is on the Hobbs' property. We've got a real mess.
It's about four feet from the fence.
Is what the drawing depicts it as, about four feet.
Right.
And she's probably got that give in front of the well. Like, to your point, you were saying-
If you look at the third, the third picture-
She's probably got almost eight feet from the well to the front of the depicted location of the tent.
That's about it.
Probably about eight feet.
Right.
The photograph showing the tent right up against her fence, which is per the plan on the Hobbs' property, what he's showing here is an error.
So can you see the well in this picture with the car?
Actually, the other pictures that you got, that they took, could I see them? Because we actually have, like, lights sticking out.
It looks to me-
She wanted to see these pictures. Okay, okay.
Is there an above-surface well cap on the property? There isn't above-
I'm going to show you-
I'm assuming it's what I'm seeing in-
It's right here.
This photo-
It's right here.
Right there in front of the quad.
No, it's not in front of the quad.
I realize that. In the photo, though, it appears to be the well cap right there. Yeah, my, yeah, mine, no. It's this fill, it's right here. It should be about the well. That, that looks, that's eight to 10 feet in front of the, in front of the tent. The drawing shows that maybe per scale is about eight feet, which the two feet would make up the difference.
So I think, Joanne, you were, you were going to ask if she can move it.
If that could be moved without it falling apart or whatever.
The tent, yeah.
The tent, to show the location that you actually are requesting.
If I want to move the tent, I'll move the fence too.
Well, the fence will be a lot harder to move.
It's just going to get tangled up.
Is there a-
But that won't happen until spring.
Do you have any idea when you're building your garage?
As soon as I get enough equity in the house that I can refinance and have it raised. That's going to be another $50,000.
And if you build your garage, is it going to be within the setbacks?
It's going to be underneath my house.
Underneath?
The house will be raised. This is like the only house in the neighborhood that has been raised.
And it wasn't raised because it did not, did this have-
It was a rental property, so if it wasn't a primary residence at the time of the flood, they were not granted fee. So it didn't get raised.
And the damage that is sustained during those floods was the loss of, apparently, the front eight feet? For the record, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Again, why do you state that it will not be contrary to the public interest?
It's, there's going to be no, there's no added harm to public safety or the river. Every, I am respectful of the river, and there'd be no added expense to the public expense.
In your opinion, the spirit of the ordinance is being observed because?
My entire property sits within the variance, within the setbacks. My property is supposed to be 100 feet from the, from my, from the street to the river, my front, my front border. No matter how you look at it, no matter, anything on my property is within, too close to setbacks to everything. Like I said, the shed has never been moved. That's where it was when we bought it. It would not survive a move. It's got cinder block or something around the bottom of it that, there's no way we can move it, and it's never been moved. All I'm trying, all I'm trying to do is be able to improve my property and be able to, you know, enjoy it. Everybody else gets to.
The variance, do you agree that substantial justice will be done in the issuing of this variance?
Yes.
Do you, it is, it is in your opinion that the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished?
No, they will not be diminished. If anything, by improving my property value, it's going to up the property values surrounding.
The enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Could you please explain to me what the hardship you would realize?
The fact that I wouldn't be able to have my lawn equipment, our floats for the river, everything would be covered under tarps, and it would just look hideous, and we'd have more trouble trying to maintain them in a windstorm. Never mind a flood. Just in a windstorm, trying to hold them down would be insane. We're just, it's just-
How is your property different from your neighbors?
I don't have a garage.
How is the property itself different? The lot, is the lot different comfortably to others?
No.
But is the absence of a garage relevant?
If you want it to be. I mean, that's, that's kind of-
So that's subjective?
Right. For purpose of this, it says unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. And what you are saying is that what distinguishes it from other properties in the area is that it does not have a garage?
It, they didn't ever have- It, it, they didn't ever have, they didn't take the opportunity to actually make the improvements as a result of the floods. They let it sit, they didn't do anything with it. And when I bought it, it was knowing that there are improvements have to be made, and this was, this was going to be part of it. I mean, it wasn't going to happen immediately. I've only owned it three and a half years, but to be able to raise it is, is the goal. To give us the same benefits as both sides of me, and across the street. The wooden shed that exists there isn't big enough to put a lawnmower in. I can put my rakes and, you know, stuff like that in there, but that's about it. You can't put a lawnmower, you can't put a snow blower. And we do have, you know, toys for the, toys to enjoy the river. We have, you know, double floats, and when they're inflated, they're the size of two inner tubes put together, and you need to feel the storm.
What, what is in the, the fixed shed? The, it's a brown, the brown shed, it's, it's closer to the road than the green.
That's got like, um, my, my Christmas decorations that are in totes, um, Halloween.
Is there a basement to the, in the house?
No.
So, it's just, you get the one floor?
I have a four-foot crawl base.
I see. Can't put much in there.
No.
And it probably floods.
It doesn't. The, actually, the first spring I was here, we had two and a half feet in the basement.
Okay, so the, the brown shed you're using as a basement or an attic?
Yeah.
Okay.
When we had the two consecutive hundred-year floods, were you on this property?
No.
Do you know from the previous owners as to how high the floodwaters came on this property?
They came just up to the main floor. The, um, the addition that had been built got flooded. So, if you look at the front of the house, to the left of the house, there was that addition.
It came, it came to the front of the house?
Yeah, it came to the, the main floor of the front, the, main floor of the house.
I have to go to this. Okay. So, if I go back to this diagram here, if we look at the footprint of the existing house, not including the new deck and the existing porch, then you would say the water came to the-
Top of the porch.
Excuse me?
To the, to the level of the porch.
And the water line came up to the front door, or the, the door that's closest to-
Close to, yeah.
Did it go any further towards the driveway?
I think it was three feet in the road.
So, this property was, quote, underwater at the time?
But they had done the, what minimal repairs they could, they did, because it wasn't their primary residence. It was a rental property. And so, what was the last flood? What was, oh eight? Oh seven?
Yeah, six and seven.
Oh seven. I didn't buy it till oh nine.
Okay.
Because they were evacuating people by boat down there.
Is the green shed anchored?
Yeah, there's, there are like, pen peg books, yeah.
Is there any foundation or flooring in that?
No, we, I know the answer to that from the last time. Could, could that shed be turned the other way, sideways?
It's putting it even closer to the water.
Yeah. Well, that, you'd be difficult to get in and out of it.
The reason I ask the question is because of the, is, could it be moved further away from the lot line? So, the, the infringement onto the setback would be less?
We could probably, we could probably move it about three feet.
I'm, I'm talking, could you turn it?
No.
It kind of looks like there's a tree.
Put in the backside, even closer to the water.
Yeah, the bird, yeah.
But I think we did, with our scientific calculation, the distance, have determined that there's some room to move it towards the well. Would you agree?
Yeah. We could, I can move, I, we could move it probably about three, three feet closer.
I ask you, is, is there, is that an active well? I see that this is serviced by, you're not on city water, even though it's available to the property, according to this?
I have an artisan well. I wouldn't want to be drinking chlorine.
Is it your intention that if you build a garage, that you are going to remove the portable shed?
Yes. Because then there would be no need for it.
Really? I ask that question because I've seen garages and portable sheds and portable sheds, because as the attorney will say, people do have a tendency to have a lot of toys. The older you get, the more you collect. Yeah, tell me about it.
Where on this site map is the, you have the full scale?
Yep.
Where's the, the septic system?
He has it.
See, it's right in front.
It's that square in front, the EDS.
EDS. It's there.
Yep.
You're saying that, granted, it puts it in the front yard, but you didn't, you couldn't put the portable shed in the front yard for the time being, until the garage is built?
That could be another two or three years.
I realize.
But would it be possible?
Anything's possible.
Also put it on higher ground. Maybe only by foot, but.
Are there any more questions? Thank you, Linda, being none. Is there, is there any more that you would like to comment on with us?
No, we're satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There being none, I will close the public hearing, and we will begin our deliberations.
Can we clarify exactly what we are going to be voting on? Are we doing all three variances and?
We're going to be doing them separately as we did the last time. The first, um, issue that we will discuss will be the, uh, shed. The temporary shed.
I think that it should be moved. I don't know where, or if, um, it should be a condition of approval or, or not, but I feel like we should at least talk about.
I do too. I, I, um, I agree with you on that. I, what I, what I feel is that this is a temporary shed, that there is a definite intent to build a garage, and I am wondering whether we should, we should consider the temporary shed for a term. And that if the garage is not built after two or three years, then, and the condition is not, well, we did that with another application before, that a term was placed as a condition. And if the garage is, is not built by that time, then we would then have to go through, we would have to re-
Reapply.
Visit this again. With the understanding that, um, it, it, it gives, it gives the direction to the applicant to continue to go forward with the, um, decision to build the garage and get that done as, as something that needs to be done, and get this temporary shed removed.
But in the meantime, move it at least onto the property.
In, in the meantime, move, at least move it onto the property, but only allow it for a certain amount of time. Because it is considered to be temporary. It does address the issues that the Hobbs's have. And the end result is we, the girl, the temporary shed is gone, and the garage exists. And I think that's, my feeling, that is what the Hobbs's would like to see. And yet, there is a hard, a financial hardship from what I hear from the applicant. And I think it would be the way to get to yes.
And I think that we, we did talk about having items on your property and covering them. And personally, I feel like people are going to have things. When you're close to the water, this is anchored in a way to the, to the ground. A tarp wouldn't be, so either you get your things covered by a tarp, it floods and you're on vacation, and you're not there to remove the things from your property. This is probably going to keep your things more contained than a tarp that's loosely placed over your items. So, I, I think addressing that concern, I, in my opinion, this is probably more, conscious, conscientious of flooding than a tarp would be.
I agree that it's better than a tarp, but in the floods that we had in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, I'm not sure how effective even that type of shed would be, how much it would withstand a flood.
Right.
And then that said, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with a condition, a timeframe as a condition. And it, it's almost like putting the condition that she built the garage, and we, I don't feel like we, I don't feel like that's a reasonable condition. That's her desire, and it's her ultimate goal, but, you know, it's a costly pursuit, and I don't think that it's something that belongs as a condition.
Well, I think that because, and I hear what you're saying. I, I, I understand what you're saying, but what I, the word temporary is the word that, um, can I say something?
Set.
Yeah. She's required her building permit for this.
Correct.
As a structure.
And we had made that part of the condition of the motion. We made that part of the motion in, in the last hearing, that, uh, you know, with the building permit, so.
Does the building permit expire?
No. She could get a building permit for this and have it on the property, and it could stay on the property.
I, I don't see how you have to treat this. If you look at our definitions on Roman, Roman numeral thirteen, age of structure is anything constructed or erected that takes up space on the ground. You know, and regardless of whether you're talking about, um, metal struts and canvas or stick-built, it's still a structure. You know, I, I think we're, I, I con, I concur with Gail. I don't think that you can impose, um, basically a large financial condition like that, which basically is to say if you don't build the garage in three to five years, say you can't have this on the property anymore, then you're back at square one. I don't think that a timeline on it would be a reasonable condition.
I'm not sure, if, if I can interpret the timeframe requirement, and I'm not a hundred percent sold on it, but I wouldn't take it as saying, if you don't have a garage built, you have to get rid of the tent. I'm saying, I, I take it as to indicate that it's a temporary structure. Say, if you don't have the money or you change your mind, and you want to keep this tent permanently, then come back and I don't know if, in the meantime, you'd still have the, a permit, need a permit for it, but I, I just take it as, you know, don't forget, this is temporary, and we, you know, you claim that it was temporary. So, this is a sort of a check to, you know, if there's progress, if you're going to build the garage, then maybe you don't need to come back, but.
You could condition it that it be relocated to meet a specific setback.
Yeah.
If it's not.
Yes.
Right.
I don't think it's temporary. It, it says portable, and I just, I think that just means that it can be moved versus a stick-built that can't be. But I, I, I'm still saying that if they, if they moved it, I don't, I don't know how many feet, but however many feet it's shown here away from that fence, I think that would satisfy, um, any concerns that, that I would have. And, and I just wanted to point out that we do have a certified survey here. Whether it's right or wrong, this is what we have. And the attorney argued that it's not correct, but yet, he's using what's on this plan to argue his point about that portable shed, but when the Hobbs's shed is pointed out to be over the line, then all of a sudden, the survey is not correct. So, just want to leave the record.
Yeah, it, it would also seem to me, we're really in some ways dealing with a boundary issue here. I kind of don't understand how, if you've got a straight boundary, why the fence is like that, and if there is an issue, why things haven't been adjusted to concur with reality.
And it's a boundary line of two property lines, and certainly the Hobbs's had the ability to get that line surveyed and bring that survey in and show that it was, you know, there was some fault to it. And I don't have that in front of me either, so I have to go by what, what I have.
So, given the current case, moving the shed onto the property, the foresight property completely, seems like it might be an adequate solution? Given the location of the Hobbs's shed and just the presence of this property line for however long it's been this way?
I think we're losing, excuse me, I think we're losing, the intent of this hearing was that they left, they, they were charged with leaving out certain arguments of the variances.
Correct.
And we've, that all of a sudden now became this blue shed. Um, I think we need to pull it back and look to see whether Ms. Forsyte did in fact now address those issues.
Well, she did address them in her packet that she submitted to us, the, when it's fifteen three one one, fifteen three one one two, and fifteen- Well, she did address them in her packet that she submitted to us, the, and it's fifteen three one one, fifteen three one one two, and fifteen three one one three. That were attached. Uh, information that she, uh, sent in and was received on January second and February first. Um, the one received on February first is the one that is addressing the fifteen point three point one one. Zoning ordinances that the Hobbeses and their attorney feel that were not addressed.
And there was another mention made by the attorney that, that Ms. Forsyte did not address the flood zone. And we all have copies, if I can find it here. Submitted with the application was the elevation certificate.
The shoreline permit?
Not the shoreline permit.
The elevation.
The elevation certificate, which shows that she didn't in fact address that.
Clarify something. The shoreline, shoreline permit by notification is just an application, or is it a permit by notification?
They can grant them a permit by notification.
Which is what this is.
If it's under a certain square feet.
It's under nine hundred square feet.
I don't know if she has that or not. I haven't.
That's this right here.
Is it just saying, is it saying it's received?
It was received November first.
It was received.
Yeah.
Form's not valid unless shoreline file number is assigned, which it is. Notification is accepted, which it is, dated and initialed by D E S, which it is. So it is in fact a permit by notification. They notified and they were granted the permit based on this certificate. Is that correct? Am I interpreting that properly?
Yes. I don't know if, I don't, I don't know what it is, but it's something that, again, you could condition that they do receive approval for.
Right.
But they do grant permit by notification is usually when it's under a certain square footage of an impact.
But this has, yeah, and this has to do with the, the deck.
Yeah, this is just.
This is specific to the deck. Okay, back to the, uh, back to the shed. The shed.
Yeah, I know, we're still talking.
You still have the shed.
Yeah. My apologies.
No, that's fine. She addressed fifteen three one one one, as she stated that no increased risk to public safety is both, so that, those are the decks. Attached, portable tent shed would be emptied, equipment moved to higher ground, ground away from flood area. Or disassembled warning of impending flood. And as we know, the attorney mentioned, how much warning do you get before there is a flood?
Sometimes you give a lot, sometimes you don't give in.
Yeah. Whether they're under, whether the equipment is under the shed or not under the shed. It's that kind of.
The equipment could just be sitting in the yard.
Right.
Right, that, that was the point we were trying to make. Yeah, it's there regardless of. And this might provide some protection.
We're just talking about the structure, we're not talking about what's in it.
However, the possibility. Of the portable tent shed. Being affected by a flood. Is real.
Regarding this, they may send a letter saying they accepted it. Usually I do get something saying they accepted it. Or I could go online and check to see if it's been accepted. They accepted the applications, what I'm looking at. They thought, signed it a number, but it. Again, something is in addition to verification that it is approved.
The variance will result, ordinance fifteen three one one two, the variance will result in increased flood levels in the regulatory floodway during the base flood discharge. And speaking.
Understand.
The base flood discharge?
How would you increase the flood levels by putting the shed there?
I mean, I would only think if you built something big enough to be in obstruction of the water.
Obstruction of the water, which is, this isn't, yeah.
The variant is the minimum necessary considering the flood hazard to afford relief. Again, the tent would be emptied, equipment moved to higher ground, but the tent would be there.
Well, or would it be, could the whole structure be taken down in the event of a flood?
Uh, 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 no, excuse me. Excuse me, we're, we're closed.
I did understand it to be movable. And we are, we did, I did ask her if she could move it to another location on the land, on the lot, so we do know that.
So is there any motion on the shed at this point? I'll make a motion to. Approve the variance for the existing. Portable shed. As requested with the condition that the shed be moved to comply. With the plan prepared by Dahlberg Land Services dated November sixth, two thousand and twelve.
Would the congestion that it will, will require a building permit?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we can add. Um, it, I'll just read it from this other one, with, and with the condition that if they, that. They obtain a building permit if required, which Patty said it is, so that they obtain a building permit.
What about the question of that other permit, the what one, the shoreline permit?
The shoreline permit that she wasn't sure.
And that, and, and that they.
The shoreline permit.
And that they receive approval, and that they.
That doesn't have anything to do with the shed though, that's the deck.
Oh, that's, that's right, okay. Is that it?
Yes.
And you don't want it for any term, any time.
I'll second. Can you try to, can you read that by?
Uh, you want my notes?
Yeah.
She made a motion to approve the variance for the existing portable sheds requested with the conditions that the shed be moved to comply. With the plan prepared by Dahlberg Land Services dated November sixth, two thousand and twelve, and with the condition they obtain a building permit if required.
Okay, and that was seconded by you? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? The motion carries. Next one will be on. The existing deck. We discussed the existing deck prior to this. Prior to this, we entertained a motion. Finding that the conditions the conservation commissions were concerned about do exist to approve the variance with the condition that it does not protrude. Beyond the existing building footprint for the conservation commission's recommendation on the side towards the water. That's what the motion was last month. Do I hear any discussion regarding the existing deck? Well, bearing none, do I hear a motion?
Could you reread the motion?
Yes. The motion regarding the existing deck, finding that the conditions the conservation commission were concerned about do exist. A motion was made to approve the variance with the condition that it does not protrude beyond the existing building footprint. For the conservation commission's recommendation on the side toward the water.
And I think I would reiterate, I would restate that motion, make that motion restated and add the condition. That a. They get. A letter of approval. For the shoreline permit.
They may not do a letter though.
Get approval, just.
So just go with this?
I think that, that this is, could be it. I just, if you want to have staff verify that it was approved.
With, with, with shoreline, and I would say with shoreline approval.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Just to verify, because it says accepted, but I don't know.
Add that line, that we get verification, staff verification that.
Should we add on these motions that we found that they met the criteria? So that that's not a question, again, saying that we did discuss and review.
Well, like, that's why, that's why I went over all the criteria for the variances.
Motion, maybe? Just to say, we acknowledge that we did review the five criteria for the variance and felt that they met. Maybe it wouldn't hurt to put that in the record.
Okay.
Probably wouldn't hurt.
Want to back up? And do that to the previous motion first?
Yeah, I'd like, what's the phrase we're going to use? It would be, um, in accordance with the five, in accordance with the five variants.
In accordance with the five criteria for granting a variance. We find that they met, or that she met the criteria.
That's the phrase.
What's the phrase?
In accordance with the five criteria of granting a variance.
Okay.
We'll have to vote on that one again.
Um, let's have a motion for the amendment. Do you have a motion to amend the first?
I have a motion to amend the first.
Uh, Joanne should do that, she's the one who.
Oh, the first one?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to amend the variance for the portable tent or shed.
Now I'm stuck in that, I'll second. No, I'll. Agree to the same.
Okay, you seconded at the beginning, so you drew your second, then you seconded it again. So, all those in favor of the amendment to the first motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, all those favorite, the, the motion carries five zero zero. Now we're on the second motion regarding the existing deck. Can you read the motion as it is?
As it is?
Where we are with it.
Hold on, let me back up. Uh, well, Ed just reiterated the previous motion from.
Correct.
Last time, adding the condition that staff verify the approval of the shoreline permit.
And it is in accordance, and it is with, in accordance with the five criteria of granting a variance.
I second.
Okay, okay, you got it.
Okay. Done?
Uh, Joanne read this here. This is the. That's the existing one we just did. And then we may, may have to, and then we go to the next page. And this is the motion.
The porch extension.
There was a motion to approve the variances from the W S W C D. And side and rear, rear yard setbacks.
Did we vote on the hundred's motion?
No.
Oh.
Jo seconded it, now we need a vote. Unless there's more discussion.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, the vote on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion carries five zero zero. A motion was made to approve the variance from W S W C D and side and rear yard setbacks for the porch extension as presented. Given that it is stated to be a pervious surface, the issues of the conservation law no longer apply. And it also said that they have a shoreline, and that they would have a shoreline permit. The issue the conservation commission had with it at the last hearing was that they were concerned that it was a non-pervious surface. That there would be no, um. Water that would seep through the deck, um, to the, to the land below it. Uh, that it would then drain, therefore it would then drain in, into the river. The conservation commission was very concerned about that. So therefore the motion was, um, made at the last meeting in December. Because, um, and as it has been stated then, and it is a matter of record now. That it is to be a pervious surface and therefore, um. The water would go through the deck and not run off of the deck. Is that your recollection as to what we discussed at the prior meeting? Does W S W C D waste water surf? Okay, does anyone have any concerns or any discussion regarding the side and rear yard setbacks? For the porch extension as presented? And I think when we discussed this before, we also discussed, um, that it did not go beyond the footprint.
Right.
Yeah, that's part of the previous motion.
And that was part.
But the previous motion was in relation to the.
To the new deck.
The new deck, to the existing one. This is to the proposed extension. And I think that we should add that to this motion, that it also must remain within the footprint. Of the existing house.
It states that in it, that the board added the condition the porch extension not exceed the existing side of the house.
Oh, the last sentence.
Yeah. Or you should say deck.
So for the porch extension as presented.
I just looked it up online.
What did you look up?
The shoreline permit. It says status shoreline P B N accept.
Oh, that's the.
That's it then.
So that, well, following conformity with. So that, well, following conformity with, with
That it's verified.
That it's verified. But that is a, it still will remain a condition of the motion. Okay, so based upon that, Ed, would you like to make a motion? Edit it as you have stated you think it should be?
Okay, I will, I'll make a motion to approve the variance from WSWCD and the side yard, side and rear yard setbacks for the porch extension as presented. Given that it is stated to be a pervious surface, the issues of the Conservation Commission no longer apply and they have a shoreline permit, which they do.
And that it's.
I would like to add as a condition that it stay within the existing side house line.
And is in conformance with the five criteria.
And that it, we have found that it's in conformance with the five criteria, that's fine.
Stay within the what? That the porch extension stay not exceed the existing side of the house line?
Side of the house line.
I just sent it to your email. Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second.
You were just sitting there waiting.
I was waiting for the moment.
He's a seconding man. Okay, so we have the motion, we have it seconded by Jo. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? There being none, the motion carries five zero zero. Thank you all. Okay, do we want to take a five minute break, or do we want to keep going? Okay, okay, we'll keep going. Okay, so, the next is request, we received a request for rehearing by Cronin, Bison, and Zelinski, PC Attorney at Law, on behalf of James and Lois Alger regarding the St. Enslum College Map Three, Lot sixty-two dash one. Is there any discussion on this? Well, I have some things I'd like to share with you.
Oh, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay, I did speak to LGC today. I spoke to them regarding, and I talked to Paul Saunderson, the attorney, Paul Saunderson at LGC, regarding information that is presented during regional impact, as to whether or not we had to consider that to be part of the public hearing. And when we left after the last meeting, that was the question that Jo had raised, which we all felt was a very good question. Attorney Saunderson did state that information that's presented during the regional impact is not part of the public hearing, that the regional impact is just to be sure that all parties that could be affected are part of the public hearing, and if there is a regional impact, they should be notified in accordance with the RSAs in the timeframe as stated, and therefore they would be able to be present for the public hearing part of the hearing. So I, based upon not having heard anything prior to that, I, I decided to call LGC on that. I did go a little bit further into the discussion. It is to me clearly, I really clearly do believe that this is a civil matter. That being said, I don't know if you still feel it necessary to rehear this, this issue that's dealing with the neighbors and St. Enslums. How we as a board juror can possibly, I know we're trying to jurisdiction over an administrative decision. The administrative decision is basically saying that St. Enslums followed that which the planning board conditionally approved. And basically we have no jurisdiction to decide whether or not the planning board approved it correctly or didn't approve it correctly, that's not our jurisdiction. That's the jurisdiction of Superior Court within thirty days, if the applicants want to appeal the planning board decision, that's where the appeal is made. And when I read all the issues that the attorney brought forward as to why we need to rehear this, again, I, I am greatly concerned that the particulars of the planning board hearing have muddled, get muddled into this whole, whole request for the zoning board of adjustments to get involved in. That being said, I would entertain any discussion regarding this rehearing because I really am sitting on the fence on this one.
If, if I may, Gail.
Sure.
I agree, I think it is a civil matter, I've read over the points of error that their attorney is citing.
I just want to say something before we go any further. Len, you are going to be, I don't want to, I don't want you to tell me what you feel before I say to you, you are appointed to be the voting member this time. Okay, and I don't want to say that I did that after you told me everything. So, okay.
Understood. No, I, I don't see anything in the points of error cited by their attorney that changes my mind, we're, we're coming down to that one key point, we're asked to review Brian's administrative decision, which he can only review, did it comport with the zoning code, and let's not even get into the use of the word comport, but you know, it was in accord, done in accordance with the zoning code, that's what Brian can do, and I think you're dealing with a factual question as far as what representations were made in the planning board hearing that were the basis of the planning board's vision, I think that, you know, legally those are questions of fact, I don't think that is within our jurisdiction, I just don't see that anything here that changes my mind again, once it seems the appeal should have been done a lot earlier, the appeal, you know, come back for a rehearing, if you're going to take it to court at that point, within the thirty day limit, not a year and a half or two years down the line, so I would be definitely in opposition to rehearing it.
And, and I firmly believe that if whatever is going to happen here, it is, it is probably going to go further, possibly further. And if it does go further, then let the state courts tell us where this needs to be at the town level. And I, I don't think it belongs here, I, I've stated that since January, I just, I just don't feel that it belongs here. And I think that, that, that what they are looking for in their gut is really to get back to the planning board, to go back to them, to have them re-review it. And that's not up to us to make that decision as a zoning board, I really don't feel that that is, that is our, our jurisdiction. Do you have any comment on that?
I think we were asked to review Brian's decision.
Right.
Right.
And that's what we did was review Brian's decision and found that was correct, you're getting into a whole nother kettle of fish if you're being asked to review the the factual basis for the planning board ruling, and some, hey, I, I think that's a matter for the courts.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
But it is in the, in the, in the condition of the process to request the rehearing, so.
Well, they've, they've done their due diligence.
They have done their due diligence in the following process. So, is there any more discussion regarding the request for the rehearing?
I'll make a motion to deny the request to rehear.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to denounce the, the request for a rehearing, seconded by Gail, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, there being none, the motion carries, we will not rehear the motion. I did want to make a couple of comments about the Town and Country. I wanted to let you know when I was briefly going through here that this town has been voted by, at the LGC's seventy-first annual conference as the municipal volunteer of the year award. So congratulations to Susan Pucker for being the municipal volunteer of the year award. And there are some very interesting articles here in Town and Country.
Sounds like a magazine, Town and Country.
Town and City, I would say Town and Country is a magazine. Town and City, which is available at our town hall for anybody, not only the members of the zoning board, but anybody in the community if they would like to come down and read, read that, they're more than welcome, and it is put out by the New Hampshire Municipal Association. So, I believe that wraps up what we had to do for tonight's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I entertain a motion to adjourn, all those in favor say.
Do you have a second?
Do you have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, there being none, the motion carries, we are adjourned, see you next month.